To call to order the October 12th, 2023, special meeting of the Ketchikan City Council. Clerk of Hall.
Kissler.
Here.
Gage.
Here.
Bradbury.
Here.
Here.
I hear you a little here.
I heard you here, but I wasn't sure if that was someone out in the audience doing it.
Matani.
Yeah.
Flora.
Here.
Gas.
Here.
Finnegan.
Here.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the free states, my nation and her individual liberty and justice for all.
The Ketchikan City Council would like to respectfully acknowledge the traditional first people of this land in Ketchikan, the Tongas Clinkit people. Under Communications. We have something too. Persons to be heard, who would like to address us on these?
Did you sign in, Roger? Did you sign in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, I was first on the list.
I think you're the only, is there, I think Eric's getting the list. Thank you, Eric.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Roger Stone. I reside at 223 Martin Street in the city of Ketchikan. And I am here this evening representing just me, no company affiliation or anything like that. However, just for the record, I am seasonally employed as a driver and instructor for Holland America Princess Alaska Yukon Division and just finished up my summer season last night, last week. And we'll talk more about that a little bit in a minute. I would first of all like to congratulate all the people that ran for office and the fact that you were elected in the vigorous foratory that preceded the election. And I want to thank you for your service and your sacrifice. It does take a significant amount of time out of your own personal life in order to be on the council and serve in a public service venue. Now, most of the time when people come to the council meeting or Borough Assembly meeting, their comments are more negative than positive. And my approach this evening is to try and kind of set a tone a little bit for you and get the wheels turned a little bit, think a little bit more positively about the things that you're going to face. And a lot of the comments that were made in the various forums and so forth during the campaign brought up an idea about limiting visitors or capping the number of visitors in the community. And I'm here to kind of make you think about that a little bit differently. If you look back at the economic history of Ketchikan, I have, I have lived in this community now for 45 years. I have been in and out of Alaska for 50 years now. When I first came to Alaska, it was very much a resource-based economy, very much a timber economy, and the economy of Ketchikan was booming. And of course, we all know what happened to that over the period of time from the mid 1970s up until about 2000. Fortunately, this community has been able to make a transition from a resource-based economy to a visitor-based economy. And whether we like it or not, we would not have a talent if we didn't have those ships out there because that's the largest part of the local economy these days. So my comments this evening are more about how do we, how do we successfully and advantageously for the people of our community take advantage of that? The one thing that the COVID pandemic kind of did, and it was kind of in conjunction with what has happened at Ward Cove in the meantime, is that there was a lot of work done by the council back three to five years ago. And Dave Yu and Mr. Flora are familiar with a lot of this, so is Jay. There was a lot of work done about how we were going to modernize and expand our dock facilities and what we were going to do and how much money we need to do invest. And there were numbers thrown around anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000 to a couple hundred million dollars. And there were public forums and all those kinds of things. And then along came COVID and our visitors evaporated for a year. And in the meantime, the Ward Cove Dock Group developed a brand-new facility at Ward Cove. And that kind of kicked the can down the road on port development. It didn't go away. It's still there and it still has to be dealt with at some point. But it, it kind of got put off a ways. And I think in the long run, that's probably a very good thing for a whole big, long number of reasons I'm not going to go into tonight. But in any case, what we see now is we have jumped from, in 2019, and my numbers are approximate, so please bear with me on that. We have jumped in 2019 from just under a million visitors to no visitors the next year and then 150,000 in 2021 roughly, given a very shortened-up season. And then things began to feel more like they were getting back to normal last year with about 750,000 people. This year, we're going to be somewhere between 1,002 and 1,005 when the final numbers come in. And I have to look at the community and think, you know, we did pretty well this summer. The traffic on Tongas Avenue, if you look back 40 years ago or 30 years ago, and Dave, you've been here all this time, there were times when we had one or two ships at the dock that would take anywhere from 30 to 45 minutes to get from the west end downtown. DOT came in, of course, to revamp Tongas Avenue. And now even on the busiest day, traffic moves pretty freely along Tongas Avenue, maybe a little bit slower, but it doesn't take very long to get from the west end downtown or vice versa. So we have made some improvements. And a lot of those improvements go along with controlling the traffic on the docks. The port security people do an excellent job of that. Racing guards have helped. And all of those things kind of roll together to make our community function. And of course, that has become even more important within the last two, three years as we have had the shuttle going back and forth to Ward Cove because a lot of our passengers come in out there on some of those larger ships. So, excuse me, that traffic flow up and down Tongas Avenue is still very much a concern and it's something that we have to look at going forward. So here's my challenge. What I'm getting at is I want you to think about this entire situation in terms of the economy of our community by thinking out of the box a little bit. The cruise industry doesn't need to be capped or limited artificially by the council or any other body for that matter. The industry will become self-limiting. And what I mean by that is that there is, no matter what we do, there is only so much capacity in this town. Now, we already see ships, we see the usage of our port facilities where we have ships coming in early in the morning and departing early in the afternoon and another ship coming in behind. And we're going to see more of that. The challenge we have, I think, over the next few years is many of the ships coming online by some of the major cruise lines are larger and larger and larger. And as those larger ships come in, our ability to handle those ships at the dock gets to be questionable in some cases. So that's the challenge in terms of the dock expansion project. But what we need to be doing as this industry grows, and it will continue to grow, and we also have to remember that these, these ships aren't fixed in Ketchikan, they're mobile. And if they're not getting what they want here, they'll go somewhere else. And so what we have to do as a community is how do we maximize that resource to benefit the people of this community in such a way that it's a long-term benefit? And I've heard a lot of criticisms about summer operators that come in and take money out and just go someplace else. Well, stop and think about that a minute. There are an awful lot of merchants that are here on a seasonal basis, but they have a tremendous investment in this community. Many of them have homes. They have a lot of money invested in their places of business. They have a lot of money invested in the community. And we have to recognize that and not look at them as some evil from some far-off place. They make a positive contribution and they pay sales tax. And there's a lot of money generated there. Now, some of the positive suggestions that, I kind of made some notes here, so I wouldn't skip out on anything. As that industry becomes self-limiting, and right now, as you're all aware, the cruise ship schedule for next year, for 2024, is already set in concrete. And the 2025 schedule is close to being set in concrete. So what the, what the cruise folks are working on right now is 2025 and into 2026 and beyond. So we have to shorten up our thinking a little bit in terms of saying, okay, how do we make sure we have the facilities available that we'll be able to adequately handle the demand for people visiting here? Driving a tour bus, as I do during the summer months, is a lot of fun for me. I enjoy the heck out of it. But what I see is we live in a unique place. It's a little piece of paradise, it truly is. And people come from all over the country and all over the world in many cases to see it and to enjoy some of the things we do and to just be here for, in some cases, only a very few hours. And they come and they leave their money behind, thank goodness. But we don't realize how lucky we are. And we have that resource out there that is a, for lack of a better term, constantly renewing itself. So we need to be careful how we approach that. And certainly, we don't want to limit it. So here's some of the things that I would challenge you to think about. One of the traffic barricades or congestion points in downtown is Mission Street between Front and Main. And that's where the Welcome March is. And people get off the ship because they're right in downtown and they're in downtown Disneyland. And that's kind of the attitude they have. They don't realize that this is an alley traffic street. And of course, Mission Street right there is open to traffic and people go stand in the middle of the street, take their picture and everything else. So there's two possibilities there that I would think the council would want to consider. One would be closing Mission Street between Front and Main to vehicle traffic during summer months. And that would certainly eliminate much of the traffic congestion that we see because people come down and they want to make a left turn there. The other possibility would be move the Welcome March to the dock. We've got the rain gauge and the, and the rock sculpture on the dock that are highly attractive situations. I mean, and think out of the box a little bit with some of this stuff because that's what's going to, is going to take to continue the smooth flow of people who live here as well as tourists going back and forth in the community. Look at the traffic patterns a little bit. Traffic, the security guards and the dock personnel downtown have done an outstanding job of keeping traffic moving and protecting pedestrians. And I think we need to put more emphasis on that. One of the things I noticed this summer is we didn't have enough of them. And that may be, may have been the fact that, you know, it's sometimes difficult to find people that are willing to work that kind of a schedule, but they are critical to be able to have a safe downtown area with days when we get 10, 15, 20,000 people going through town one way or another. And then traffic from the Ward Cove shuttle. Right now, the lot opposite Dock 4 is the shuttle lot. That's how we refer to it. And so those people have to somehow or another, if they want to be in downtown, transit from the shuttle lot. And they come, most of them come down to Promenade, which keeps most of the foot traffic off of Tongas Avenue. But maybe we need to look at that from the top down a little bit and see if there is more than one location that could be used as a shuttle area in downtown so that we disperse those people somewhat. Because that, that becomes a bottleneck later in the day and it can become a bottleneck right where you've got to turn on to Dock 4, whether you're going north or south on Tongas Avenue. Now, the other part of that is right now, a lot of the infrastructure that, that we rely on for our visitors is in downtown. That's changing and it's going to continue to change. For example, next summer, the Lumberjack Show is planning a venue at Ward Cove. That kind of thing will continue and much of that traffic will be at Ward Cove as opposed to coming downtown. And that traffic is going to continue to build because the Ward Cove Dock is nowhere near capacity in terms of the number of port visits that occur out there. And there's also room, if you think about it, for another dock facility out there in addition to what's already there. And at some point in time, however long down the road that may be, that investment will get made simply because it will be, there will be enough demand to justify it. So all of those things kind of have to come to the equation. You can't look at this in context of just this project and that project and this problem and that problem. And the, so here's the kicker. If we are going to prosper as a community, one of the things that we rely on in addition to cruise ship fees and so forth in the summertime is sales tax. Think seriously about annexing Ward Cove. There is a huge sales tax base right there, right now, at the old mill site that is nothing but thorough sales tax. And I know that's an extremely controversial topic, but I think it's something that has to be thought about in terms of how do we look down the road? And there's all kinds of issues that flow into that. But let's not put off the thought process. Let's start talking about it and seeing if it makes sense. Okay, and then there is a limit, again, on the number of visitors that we will see, but we don't need to impose it. Again, the industry will be self-limiting at some point because there's only so much capacity there. So what we have to do is look at how do we create the capacity that the industry utilizes? And then once we know what capacity we've created, how do we maximize that capacity to the better benefit of the community? That's the real challenge. Now, most importantly, I think, is to continue to think in a positive fashion rather than think in a, in a negative fashion. Nothing gets done if you're negative about things. If you, if you have something that's a problem and you have an alternative or a solution, fine, propose it. But don't just criticize what's there just because it's not working the way you want to see it. Come up with something that's positive. Now, when I say that, one of the things, the last point I'd like to make is, I know many of you have had the opportunity or have the opportunity on a reasonably a regular basis to visit Anchorage. Have any of you driven down a street in Anchorage that DOT is responsible for that's in the kind of shape of Thomas Avenue? Probably not. So DOT, and I've kind of been on this for a while and I don't, I don't have any direct in-line, but I've been trying to follow the planning processes. The state of Alaska and DOT have committed millions of dollars to improvements on Tongas Avenue. And that's a good thing. The problem is the timeline. DOT is great at planning and planning and planning and planning. And then when they start doing it, it turns into doo-doo. So the point being, we've got to accelerate that process because part of the reason that we have congestion on Tongas Avenue was because the traffic patterns and the flow and the way it's arranged are grossly outdated in terms of what we're actually doing on Tongas Avenue today. And the, and Mr. Flora will probably back me up on this. The automobile shops in town love it because they're constantly selling tires and alignments because of the problems on Tongas Avenue. So somehow or another, we as a community need to be able to, again, on a positive basis, go to the state, go to DOT and say, look, guys, your timeline is way too long. We've got to shorten that up in order to serve adequately for the needs of the community. So those are the things that I wanted to kind of point out and make them positive things. And again, congratulations to those of you who are free to serve. Good luck, you're going to need it. And you are facing some things that are going to be difficult. And I wish you the best of luck in all of that. And certainly, like I say, being a tour driver in Ketchikan gives you a unique perspective. And people love this community, they really do. People, I don't think I've talked to a single person of the thousands of people that I've been around this summer and the last, in the last few years that have any negative comments about the community even on a rainy day. So we need to be able to put ourselves in a situation where we continue to capitalize that. Any questions?
Questions? Or, interesting. Thank you for coming there. Thank you for your, thank you for your input.
Yes, thank you.
Does anyone else want to address the council tonight on any subject? Seeing none, then I guess we will close. Persons to be heard. First order of business, Resolution Number 23-2898, recognizing the efforts and accomplishments of Abby Bradbury.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move the City Council to approve Resolution Number 23-2898, recognizing the efforts and accomplishments of Abby Bradbury and establish an effective date.
Second.
Move in second. Okay, we'll read the proclamation, then we can vote on it. For resolution of this council, the city of Ketchikan, Alaska, recognizing the efforts and accomplishments of Abby Bradbury and establishing an effective date. Whereas Abby Bradbury first came to Ketchikan in 2011 on a cruise with her family and knew she wanted to return. And whereas Abby Bradbury worked in Ketchikan seasonally in 2012 and 2013, and in that same year, because of her love of animals, started working full-time at Island to Island Veterinary Clinic. And whereas Councilmember Bradbury was elected to the Ketchikan City Council in 2020. And whereas Councilmember Bradbury brought to the council her vast knowledge of tourism and operations and encouraged the council to work with cruise partners to assist the expansion of the port of Ketchikan and upland efforts. And whereas, as a city council member, Councilmember Bradbury has served on the Community Agency Grant Committee, Southeast Alaska Power Agency Cooperative Relations Committee, and the Museum Advisory Committee. And whereas Councilmember Bradbury's commitment to the community of Ketchikan extends beyond serving on the council as she serves and participates on other boards and organizations such as the Ketchikan Chamber of Commerce, as the vice president of the local chapter of the Alaska Travel Industry Association, the American Legion Auxiliary, is a member of First City Rotary. And whereas Councilmember Bradbury, contributed to a variety of projects and policies to provide clarity and direction such as the Ketchikan Visitors Bureau Agreement, the Dock Vendor Program, and the development of the Tourism Manager Position. And whereas Councilmember Bradbury supported many projects such as the distribution of the CARES Act funding to the community, the lease agreement between the city and Peace Health that ensures continued quality care for the people of Ketchikan, conveying property to women in safe homes for their new facility to create a safe space for people facing domestic violence, and the Metle Catlin Airtight Project. And whereas Councilmember Bradbury exhibited her dedication to the people of Ketchikan by listening to their concerns, ensuring their concerns were heard by the city council. Now, there it be resolved by the City of Ketchikan, the City of Ketchikan, Alaska as follows. The City of, the Council of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska recognizes and celebrates the many accomplishments and contributions made by Abby Bradbury as a council member. Section two, the Council of the City of Ketchikan thanks Abby Bradbury for her years of service to the community. And section three, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon adoption, passed hopefully, and approved by a duly constituted court of the City Council of the City of Ketchikan on this 12th day of August, October 2023. Dave Cover, Mayor. Further discussion on the motion. Clerk of Hall.
Flora.
Yes.
Gas.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Gage.
Yes.
Kissler.
Yes.
Bradbury.
Yeah, sure.
Do I vote on this?
Yeah, we'll, we'll give you a special dispensation, so.
Yes, I guess.
Matani.
Yes.
Move your best. Thank you, Abby, wherever you are. Okay. Five, five B Canvas Board Report of the October 3rd, 2023. Remove the City Council, accept the Canvas Board Report for the October 3rd, 2023 Regular Municipal Election.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, Clerk of Hall.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Gage.
Yes.
Kissler.
Yes.
Bradbury.
Yes.
Matani.
Yes.
Flora.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passed. Moving on to Resolution Number 23-2897, certifying the October 3rd, 2023 Regular Municipal Election.
Your Honor. I move the City Council to approve Resolution Number 23-2897, asserting and declaring the results of the regular election on October 3rd, 2023 and establishing an effective date.
Second.
Move in second, discussion.
Gas.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Gage.
Yes.
Kissler.
Yes.
Bradbury.
Yes.
Matani.
Yes.
Okay. Office, I'm sorry.
Is someone accidentally hitting the mute button up there?
I saw that, not as you view the videos.
Is that you?
Everyone's a critic, boy. You just went on the executive sessions, we're going to get.
Okay.
How is he even getting a button out there?
I don't know. Well, to me, all those tech guys, they always have something hidden. Messing with us, putting freaky little faces over us for the screen and. Okay, I'm sorry, back to office.
Let's see, what's first here? I got them.
Thanks for that.
Okay, let's look at the draw. I'll just grab one of these folders. And the first one on top is Riley Gas. Gas. Okay. I'll get split.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yes. By the way, as your hand is on there. There we go. I, Riley Gas.
I, Riley Gas.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
And defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
And defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Alaska.
Constitution and the laws of the state of Alaska.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Ketchikan.
The Charter and ordinances of the city of Ketchikan.
And I will perform the duties of council member.
Perform the duties of council member.
Of the city of Ketchikan.
City of Ketchikan.
Alaska, upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
Honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
And will do even and exact justice to all persons to the best of my ability.
Will do even and exact justice to all persons to the best of my ability. There you go.
There you go. Judy Zingy.
She'll, she'll be all right. She's got resting.
I, Judy Zingy.
Didn't have enough time.
I, Judy Zingy. Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
Say that again.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Alaska.
Constitution and the laws of the state of Alaska.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Ketchikan.
The Charter and ordinances, the city of Ketchikan.
And I will perform the duties of council member.
And I will perform the duties of council member.
Of the city of Ketchikan, Alaska.
Of the city of Ketchikan, Alaska.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
Honestly.
Honestly.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
And will do even and exact justice to all persons to the best of my ability.
I will do, thank you. And exact justice to all the persons to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
She needs, she should give us a cheat sheet.
Next to me, I'm just right over here. What side is it? Will she come up?
Actually.
He gotta do Mr. Finney.
We'll follow your lead.
Okay. I, Jack Finnegan, do solemnly swear.
I, Jack Finnegan, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Alaska.
Constitution and the laws of the state of Alaska.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Ketchikan, Alaska.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Ketchikan, Alaska.
That I will perform the duties of council member.
That I will perform the duties of council member.
Of the city of Ketchikan.
Of the city of Ketchikan.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
Honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
And will do even and exact justice to all persons to the best of my ability.
Will do even and exact justice to all persons to the best of my ability.
There you go. Thank you.
So did you make, Judy bring her name tag?
Yes, I did. I even have her in the roll call.
Hold it out of all offense.
No, I think I gave it to her and I had to make that today.
Did I give you your name tag last time?
Okay.
You can come up and, and join us now.
Well, we need to adjourn then.
Well, actually, we have a mayor council plan.
Okay. She can still come up here.
She can come up here. Once, 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 once she is sworn at in, or whatever you want. She is, she, she.
She is sworn at.
She may, she may approach the dais. Mayor and council member comments, Mr. Matani.
Congratulations to the winners. Finnegan, Gass, Zingy, and, uh, thank you to Abby Bradbury. It was a pleasure serving with her. It'll be missing her, but I'm sure we'll have her input. So, welcome back, thank you.
Ms. Kissler.
Yep, glad to have you guys back. It's been great working with you and rebound. Abby, um, you are an amazing person. It's unbelievable, um, the work ethic you have, um, with what, everything you do and, uh, um, what you have given to the council, you've given so much. It's, it's just amazing and I want to thank you for all those efforts.
Ms. Kissler.
Welcome back to the two. And welcome back to you. It's been a long year.
Yeah. She brought the teasers.
Yeah.
That's why she's on the end.
And congratulations, Abby, you've got her free time back. It'll be, yeah, fine. Congratulations.
Mr. Gass.
Um, yes, I agree, Abby, it's been really good working with you. You definitely bring a fiery spirit and a good work ethic and, uh, a different perspective than certainly I have sometimes, so it's, it's been really nice to hear different ideas. And, uh, I wish you the best in your, uh, next adventures and, uh, to the community, thank you for trusting in me again, and I will commit to taking the businesses, the citizens very seriously. Thank you.
I think Mr. Gass's phrase was fiery passion that you used. Abby's efforts and Abby, I do want to salute your work ethic. I'm always impressed with the amount of preparation you would do for each agenda item. Uh, I will miss trying to read your scribbled notes during meetings out of the corner of my eye. And, uh, I'm not sure, I hope Judy that you like Tootsie Rolls because I've been giving them to Abby. And, uh, I do wish you the best of luck with, um, with, I'm sure you're gonna stay involved in a variety of capacities and maybe with some of the travel that you've long, long talked about, so, thanks for your service.
Here we go, just some notes.
He's passing sugar.
Yeah.
Ms. Bradbury.
I mean, uh, thank you, everyone. I'm sorry I'm not there tonight. I am in sunny Florida at the moment. Um, I appreciate everybody's support and, um, help over the last three years. Uh, it doesn't seem like we did accomplish a lot on paper, but I feel like we've had amazing conversations and have kind of laid some great, uh, foundation for you guys to continue moving forward on this. Um, thank you for bearing through all of my work sessions and all of my amendments and all the fun that I have caused. Um, so, thank you guys and good luck. You have a lot of things, uh, headed your direction or at your table already, and I know you guys will do a great job. And if you ever need anything, I am still here.
Thank you. Ms. Flora. I want to thank council member Bradbury for her service to the community. Um, three years goes by quick and I, like everybody else said, I appreciate your, your, your work ethic and your participation in trying to achieve the best outcomes for the community. Congratulations to Mr. Gass and Mr. Finnegan. Judy.
And it starts.
That's all I've got, you know?
The games begin.
Deja vu all over.
No statements.
I've spent the next year refereeing. Uh, council member Bradbury, we will see you in, in future meetings, I, I am absolutely certain. And you will stay involved and that is a good thing for our community.
Adjourn.
Of this meeting, okay, and that leads us to the second meeting. The organizational meeting of the city council for October 12th of the new city council, 2023.
Hold on a second, your honor. She gets her candy and then the pen and the... No candy.
Fresh candy.
Here is the least. She gets her year old stuff, she gets her regular refresh.
That's all I gotta do with the Tootsie Rolls.
And then this sign. Bro, check your number.
I would just hand them off to him.
You may continue, your honor.
I, I'm sorry, I've lost my train of thought. Clerk will call the roll.
Flora.
Here.
Gass.
Here.
Finnegan.
Here.
Kissler.
Here.
Gage.
Still here.
Zingy.
Here.
Matani.
Here.
Hey, we're all here. Under new business, um, election of vice mayor, what is the will of the council?
Your honor. Yes, I'd like to nominate council member Gage for the office of vice mayor.
Second.
Any nominations? Two will close the nominations, I guess, uh...
She accepted that position.
These two were conspiring.
Oh, no, it's me along here. Clerk will call the roll.
It's on her. It's just a...
Yeah, I, 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 I was gonna do unanimous consent.
Yeah, it's just unanimous consent.
Okay. Moving, moving on to mayor and council comments.
Somebody already wants to move his chair.
Great, now she's...
Oh, you'll get all shuffled around then. We can't have all the new people on this side of the table.
You.
None of us.
Yeah. Kinda. Mix it up.
It was kind of weird when we had all people leaving, we were all on one side. That, that was kind of serious. Well, I'm sorry, all people who are up for reelections, I know pressure, but Jack's in my spot. I assume we got to have a lottery, this is all. Who gets to actually be outside the room? Okay.
Just from the neck. I missed this.
Moving on to mayor and council comments, does anyone have anything to say? I didn't think so. That leads us to, uh, the exciting part of the evening, executive sessions. And, uh, I have, uh, had a request we could flop them so that, uh, Mr. Gass could, could take part in the first one and not, not sit out here.
I think he has a special occasion at home. Don't you?
Oh, yes, he does.
It's the missus's birthday, so.
Okay, well, in that case, in that case, in that case, then we have just canceled the executive session.
They all go to the party.
Remember, be, be, be sure to bring us lots of cake. Okay, so let's go on and do the request for executive session discussion of KPU TV Contract Service Strategies.
Chair, one more thing to mention.
Your honor, I move the city council declare that consistent with the city manager's memorandum dated September 29th, 2023, it is in the best interest of the city to discuss strategies relative to negotiation of television subscriber, provider agreements, and service delivery in executive session. And in accordance with that finding, the city council go into executive session pursuant to KMC 2.04.025A1 and 3 to discuss said negotiations, which matters include the need to discuss subjects, the knowledge of which would have an adverse impact upon the finances of the city, and matters which are required to be confidential pursuant to the Alaska Trade Secrets Act.
Second.
Move to the second discussion. Clerk will call roll.
Gass.
Yes.
Gage.
Yes.
Zingy.
Yes.
Flora.
Yes.
Matani.
Yes.
Kissler.
Yes.
And Finnegan.
Yes.
I do have one request, your honor. I have made a pie, I have ice cream, so would we like to serve it then going? Or do you want to do the, because it's an owl, or are we taking a pie in there with us? We usually have a dessert when we have these, so I did.
We do. We want to just take it in there.
Slave away at home.
Let's do that. Let's take it with us. We'll take it in there. And then we'll have something to throw at Mr. Gass.
Yeah.
To the Ministry of Weather or something.
Ministry of Weather.
The Borough, the Borough, I think.
Yeah. How's the Borough?
We just had an executive session where we discussed with staff, KPU TV and other issues. And, uh, we have a second executive session. Chair, one more thing to motion.
Your honor, I move the city council to declare that consistent with the assistant city manager's recommendation, it is in the best interest of the city, discuss strategies relative to negotiation of a new collective bargaining agreement between the city of Ketchikan Doing Businesses as Ketchikan Public Utilities and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 1547 to replace the existing contract expiring December 31st, 2023 in executive session. In accordance with that finding, the city council go into executive session in accordance with KMC 2.04.025A1 to discuss said negotiations and subjects, the knowledge of which would have an adverse impact upon the finances of the city and upon the city's ability to negotiate favorable labor agreements.
Second. Move in second, discussion.
Your honor.
Yes.
As directed by the attorney, I have to abstain because I'm a member. See you guys.
That's right. You guys are darned idiots. Yo, there's something to that.
I need to see what the labor agreement is first.
Exactly.
Just wants more cake.
Clerk will call roll.
Gage.
Yes.
Zingy.
Yes.
Flora.
Yes.
Matani.
Yes.
Kissler.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Motion passed.
And now for you.
We're bad here, we just don't, we just don't change rates at all for 10 years because we're, because we're gonna be tough on whatever and then we, and we, and we let a future council take, take the blame for it. Or a future assembly. Well, that's right. Sorry. We're bad upon, um, we, uh, gave staff direction in labor negotiations, always a fun, pleasant way to spend an evening. Uh, Chair, one more thing to motion.
Adjourn.